I'm able to attend a free assembly. I'm able to participate in a free government. And I thank you, God. I thank you, God, for my leaders. I thank you, God, for my people, my friends all around me, people I've never met. People, God, who care about other people. That's what makes us special. We ask you, Lord, to give us a greater love for one another and a greater sense of blessing. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We have three special presentations this evening. The first one, it's about time we get some good news. The eighth grade boys' basketball team is conference champion. We want to recognize them tonight. So I want to call their athletic director, Steve Cox. He's the coach here as well, Steve.
My practice, David Dawson, right here is head coach. Come on up.
Come on up.
John Parker, his assistant.
Come on up, John. Come on over and describe your tournament. Okay, let's all watch a video.
I can probably do it from right here. I'll tell you what a special community I've been a part of. My name is David Dawson. I'm a North Central guy, and I work for Simon Property Group down at Greenwood Park Mall in Bloomington. And five years ago, through fate, we'll call it, a blessing came to my door, and that was Coach English. And he said that I needed a guy to build my program down in middle school. And I've been there for five years, and it's just been such a blessing to be part of these families and these kids and this community. So I want to say thank you for having us out here. That's way more important than our wins and losses. This program was built off of "we before me." And I'm just, again, so grateful to be part of Coach Parker and Mr. Cox's program and these boys' lives. You know, I was talking to the Franklin Central coach down there, and it's very rare in middle school that I get to have boys back-to-back, right? I'm normally shuffling through. You get about six to eight weeks to coach them up, and then you get a six-to-eight-week season, and it's kind of over. With this group, the eighth-grade position became open. Mr. Cox moved me up with the boys, and I've been working with them for, you know, since sixth grade ended. And so I'm just really proud of the growth of them, you know? Would it have been nice to go undefeated? Yes. Did we get a bunch of wins? Yes. Did we get a bunch of challenges and learning lessons that I hope made them better men? Absolutely. So with that, I just want to say thanks. You know, this group represents Beach Grove well. You know, we've made a lot of mistakes, but we can fill this city hall with all the lessons we've learned at Beach Grove. And so I'm just real proud of these guys. Coach Parker, he's a Beach Grove graduate of 2020?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. He's going to talk about our best win at Franklin Central and talk about the overtime win and how that went down with the defense and being down 17 points in the fourth quarter, taking it to overtime and then winning. And why John's going to be good at telling that story is because we all remember when Beach Grove whipped you-know-what out of Southport in six overtimes, and this is the young man that hit that shot. So on that, we're glad to have him on the staff, and he's going to tell them. When he's done, I got a little video just kind of recapping the season. So thanks so much for having us tonight.
So start of the fourth quarter, I think we're down 17. I told the boys, I said, either you can come back, or you can fold and, you know, we can go home, lose it by 20 or 30, and we can leave with our heads down. They took the challenge. They brought it all the way back. A big player hit three threes in a row. With like a minute left, we're down like nine. We had like three steals, back-to-back-to-back. One was an and, one a floater, and I think another three. And then they come down, we found they missed their free throw. We call a timeout, we get the ball out of bounds. We saw a good isolation moment for one of our better guards. He was a mismatch. He comes down, hits the floater, ties the game, we go into overtime. Was it three minutes in overtime? Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it was just great defense.
Yeah, and a bunch of steals. They played really hard, and I was, it reminded me a lot of what Coach English taught, you know? Just hard work. It didn't matter if he had the worst group of players or the best. He always expected one thing, and that's just hard work. So I was proud to see them achieve that moment. That was great.
Coach, before we show the video, I just want to introduce the boys. So as you, I call you.
Coach, have them come up.
Yep, have them come up, and we're going to watch the video here. You can, Aiden. Aiden Spears was our team manager. Aiden, now it's time to stand up. Josiah Jackson. Nick and Natasha. That's Ed Farthing. I recognize it. Bryce Billington. Derek Moreno. Michael Moore. Noah Dean and George Stinkins. Lacy Stevens. Taekwon Lee. Brandon O'Kelly Tyler. This is for Bravo. And listen, Sean Shanklin. Anybody else? Blake Shimali. Two great players can't be with this. Here we go. Go over there, make sure everybody can see this little video. Like, again, just I said, a little tribute to our season I put together.
You're all right. You're all right.
Mike, you're taking that charge right there.
Coach, if you could come over, I got a presentation for you. On behalf of the city of Beach Grove, we congratulate the Beach Grove Middle School eighth grade boys' basketball team. 2021 Middle Indiana Crossroads Conference Champions. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, boys. There you go. All right, thanks again.
Thank you, guys. You did such a good job on the video.
I'll send that out.
Thank you for the last year's job.
Okay.
Bye. Thanks for that job.
Coach Parker, I got a question for you. I was at the Southport game, and as I get, of course, it's only a couple of years, but I'm getting older. I'll probably tell my grandkid when he's in high school that you hit that shot as soon as they threw the ball in. But did you make that shot before you got to midcourt?
Like, did I think it was going in? Yeah.
No, it went in. It hit nothing but net, as I recall. But did you shoot it before you got to midcourt? I thought you did. So it should have been a four-point shot. But let me tell you, folks, if you were at that game, that is the best game. I've watched 100 high school games. That was the best game I've ever seen played. Not only was that boy good, I mean, the whole team played good. Some of them, I think a couple of them even fouled out, I think.
Like, four out of our five starters.
Yeah, and it was the best game I've ever seen. Every time, I was sitting up high in Southport, and I have a lot of trouble walking down steps. Every time, at the end of the game, I thought, well, this is over, start down. He makes a three-pointer. Go back up, come back down. Either Southport was going to win, or they were. And every time, I had to go back up and sit down. And we finally won, by the way. Hell of a game.
Guys, you do not have to stick around. After about five minutes, you'll say, oh.
See you later.
Did that go for everybody?
Yeah.
Took a little quiet stay.
Next up, council, second presentation this evening is the annual State of the Court by the Honorable Andrew Wells. Judge.
That's your daughter?
Yes. Sure. Judge, thank you. Thank you. Thanks. I get two. Oh, did I give you one? Andrew just wasn't late. Okay, all right, I'll come and use it then. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got to say, I got to, I'm going to need to talk to the mayor before I come give these presentations, because I feel like the last three years, it's either been the conference championship middle school basketball team, the conference championship basketball team, the conference championship high school swim team. I just can't catch a break, because after that, it's the most boring topic you could get, is our city court.
Judge, it sounds like you're good luck, maybe.
Maybe that's it. But nonetheless, so here I am, I'm going to give you guys an update. So 2020, year in review. This is going to flow just like it's flowed the last few years. And then we've got data, mostly going back to 2012 in all of these slides. Some of them are 2011. 2011 would have been the year before I took over the court, so 2012 is the first year. So 2020, as you could probably expect, filings were down for obvious reasons. Global pandemic, not many tickets being written, less people on the roads, less people out doing things. So as you see, we had 3,300, about 3,400 filings last year, which was slightly down from the year before. And I'll have you note, too, that the 4,000 from the year before was impacted pretty significantly due to weather during the races. The town of Speedway files in our court, and I don't, I'm not sure we got more than maybe one or two for the whole Brickyard week. And weather during, I think it was the 500 week also impacted some of the filings, too. So that was why that year was down a little bit. So I don't expect this to be, it looks kind of like a trend, but I really don't expect it to be that based on the first month of 2020 and the last few months of 20, or excuse me, the first month of 2021, the last few months of 2020. So if you go to the next slide, total dispersments, 673,000. That's a solid number considering, I mean, when Cindy Hartman, my clerk, and I were looking at the numbers in May, we thought, wow, this could be a pretty dramatic scenario this year when it comes to filings and dispersments that we've not seen before. But they really picked back up pretty substantially about July, August timeframe. So there's the deferral numbers. One thing you'll notice in years past, especially if you've been on the council for a handful of years, usually this presentation has a lot of records. You know, this is the highest we've ever done for this, that, or the other thing. This presentation doesn't have any of that. This was not a record year for anything because of the pandemic. But net to Beach Grove, just 136,000. That's a solid number when you go back historically. And then the budget, as you can see, that's what our budgeted number was, 173,000. And then the expense, that's not the exact number. Jim had circulated the appropriations for December, but for whatever reason, I couldn't find it in my files. I think the number was around 148,000 or 149,000, but I took off November. I took the November appropriations report that I had and kind of forecasted it out through December. So that's actually lower than that 152. But as you can see, we adjusted when things happened in March and April and reduced our expenses accordingly to try to, you know, conserve, like I think most of the city agencies did. If you go to the next slide, you can see that's total dispersments over the last since 2011. So even with a pandemic-impacted year, you can see we were still, we were right at where we were in 2014 and higher than 2013, 2012, and 2011. So all things considered historically, still a solid year for the court. If you go to the next slide, this is just when you take out Beach Grove by itself. So when I say total dispersments on the last slide, that big number that's been almost a million dollars in a couple of years, you know, those dollars are going to the state, to the county, to Beach Grove, to Speedway, to Lawrence, you know, basically anybody that's involved in court filings gets a little piece of the filing fee or the fine. So that's the total number. And then this slide, I like to pull out and just show what stays in Beach Grove, whether that's in the general fund or in the LOAT fund or other, or the LOL, I can never remember the acronym, the law enforcement one. And then there's another court fund, too. But anyway, so that's the number. And as you can see, again, even with the slowdown for three or four months, that number's still higher than the 2013 and the 2012 numbers. And then it would have been higher 2011. I don't know why, I wasn't ever able to figure out what the 2011 or 2010 numbers were, but they were lower than 12. I do know that. So highlights as we go forward, we're going to continue our interlocal agreements, as we have for years now, with Speedway, Southport, Homecroft, Lawrence, Clermont, et cetera. Those municipalities had been, up until 2020, just been filing ordinance violations in our court. And all of them, except Lawrence, are now going to start filing infractions in our court. So that's a positive thing. It's nice for them. They have one court now that gets the lion's share of their citations. They only have to go to Court 13 for certain things. We take some cases off Court 13's plate, but given the size of their, the size of their docket, the pandemic has kind of really been a struggle for them, because they have such the volume. And we're really able, you know, our size has actually been an asset. We're able to handle it and adjust and keep things moving. State police, the prosecutor's offices said state police can start filing now. We've not seen any of their tickets yet, but I would expect that at some point, some of those will start filing. It won't be all of them in Marion County, but I would imagine there will be a few in this kind of area of the city, that patrol in this area of the city that will file. One nice thing that was really picking up steam, and I think I might have mentioned this last year at the presentation, is the school police department. So a few years back, schools, the state of Indiana allowed schools to start creating their own police departments, and a handful of the corporations in Marion County have done so. And they needed a flexible court to file their citations. So Franklin Township, Perry Township Schools are filing with us. We're expecting Washington Township to start filing soon. And then there, we've had discussions with a few of the others. So it's actually been really nice for them, I believe. I mean, I can't speak for them, but it just seems that we are an easier avenue for departments that small as compared to Court 13 for Marion County. And don't get me wrong, Court 13 does a great job, so. But when you have that volume compared to us, you know, the smaller departments, I think are, you know, were a better fit. And then this is the, 2020 was the 10th year that we were under budget. So I, we always try to, in the nine years that I've been the judge, I've really tried to make sure that we kept our costs down. We've gone, you know, you guys have heard these stories before about e-ticketing and electronic filing and paperless court and all of that. And so all those maneuvers over the years, not only has it allowed us to stay under budget for a decade and pass those cost savings back to the city and to the taxpayer, but it also allowed us to handle the global pandemic in stride. I mean, we didn't have much issue with working from home or delaying filings or having the court offices closed to the public for certain amounts of times, because we had all of these electronic avenues open for people. And we've been doing it for years, and people were used to it. So we, it's really made all the rigamarole that we've been dealing with for the last 11 months pretty seamless, at least as seamless as it can be for us. And then if you just go to the last slide, that's all the nuts and bolts. That's the I chart that's got all the dollars. Every dollar is counted for per State Board of Accounts and the Indiana Code. And so that's where it all goes. You can see that if you need help getting to sleep tonight, you can spend some time looking at that. Questions? Any questions?
So the accessibility of Beach Grove, that helps a lot when you were referring to the other court, with that courtway downtown. So this being here, is the accessible?
Court 13 is actually on the east side of Indianapolis, on West Washington Street. They're fairly accessible. The thing that's nice about us is, one, we are fairly accessible between, you know, with the interstates over here. And we have court at night, and then we have all the electronic filing options. And we're able to, one nice thing we're able to do that Court 13 can't do, just because of the volume they have, is when we find out a case isn't going to go, we can, our staff lets the department know that day. So officers aren't coming out to just find out that their court, or that their court date isn't going to happen. And a lot of, like the schools, for example, the evening court sessions are perfect for them, right? Because they're, they really can't afford, you know, you're talking two, three, four officers for the whole department. They can't really afford to send someone out to Court 13 during the afternoon for three or four hours. But they can come over down here for an hour at night at 6 o'clock. And so it just kind of works pretty nice for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? All right, you're an easy crowd tonight. I'm not as exciting as the three-point game-winning shots, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Judge.
Last special presentation this evening that you'll hear is zoning petition, case number 2020-ZON-098. At this time, I'll defer to city legal. Craig?
Yes, this is the property located at 501 North 17th Street. Mr. Rutherford here. Will you please approach, sir? You have any witnesses?
I do not.
You do not? Okay. Please proceed.
Do you want to swear me in or anything?
Yeah, well, I can. The testimony you're about ready to give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Rutherford. My offices are over in Wanamaker. Before we get to the details of this, I had a flashback while listening to the story about this basketball team. I played for the eighth grade Franklin Central flashes back in the day. And we gave up a similar lead in the fourth quarter, and I hadn't thought about that in almost 40 years. Thank you for that bad memory. I'm here, I'm here this evening on behalf of the sisters who manage and run the Hermitage, the St. Paul Hermitage is over at 17th and Southern. And as a part of segregating the senior care facility from the convent that they actually live in, and they created several years ago a separate parcel, and it's been pointed out to them that by separating that out, there was a question whether it was properly zoned. The whole air property is zoned SU2 for religious uses. And if somebody questioned it, or, and there was, if there was ever a scenario where that was actually deeded separately, the existing zoning does not apply, because it's no longer would be a religious use. So we went through the process of determining what was the correct zoning classification that would allow that to continue to operate exactly the way that it's operating now, if it wasn't owned or part of the religious use that's on the rest of the property, and that's C1. So in Beach Grove, when you file a zoning case, typically the city council opts in to come hear that. So today, this is step one of our request to rezone this 8.7 acres to the C1 classification. If it is approved tonight, then it would go to the commission, the full commission of the city of Indianapolis, and then their formal city-county council. And I think the staff person here, Linda Albrand, will explain some of the details for that to you. We did discuss the case with a couple of neighbors. As a part of my normal practice, when we file for a zoning or a variance case, I send a detailed letter along with some exhibits. So we sent the site plan and assured them that the site plan is not changing, they're not tearing the building down and trying to build something terrible there. This is just legally establishing under a different zoning classification, the exact same thing that's there. And I was able to answer their questions, and to my knowledge, they were fine with what we were proposing. We did work with the planning staff, and planning staff recognized the need to make the change as well. They did go through the list of things that would typically be approved in a C1-zoned piece of property and identified some uses that are contained in the staff report that we have agreed to prohibit. And I'll just go through those real quickly. Basically, what it says is, "The following otherwise authorized C1 uses shall be prohibited on the subject property as a primary use." And they include a transit center, bed and breakfast, a hair and body care salon or service. And I want to clarify, this is a primary use. So it still allows them to have the hair salon that's in the facility, as long as the primary use of it is related to the residents that are in there. We also, the financial insurance services was on a list that was circulated, but that has been stricken. It did not really, wasn't, wasn't something that staff was concerned about stopping there. But then the last four uses that would be prohibited as primary uses would be substations and utility distribution nodes, medical or dental offices, centers, or clinics, and medical or dental labs, and a mortuary or funeral home. So my client is in agreement with recording a commitment against the property. If the zoning is approved, that would prohibit those uses as a primary use. We do have staff recommendation of approval. I'm not aware of any remonstrance that is here. We're happy to answer any questions. I have a couple of the sisters that are here to answer some questions, if you have some for them. But we would simply ask for your approval of this this evening.
Does the council have any questions?
I have one question. Does the rezoning have any possibility futuristic becoming a TIF district? Or is that for?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Would that, changing of the zoning, would that make it accessible for futuristically having TIF monies available to that property?
I don't actually know. I don't think, that's not in the thinking to, and typically a TIF sort of scenario would come because they were doing something new. Well, yeah. This, to my knowledge, they're not planning on. This, this, to my knowledge, they're not planning on doing something new. It's a, it's a nice piece of property. There's some open space on it, but right now the, the plan is just to keep it exactly as it is for, for the near future at least. So.
Any other question? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? You have no witnesses. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of the petition? Okay. Are there any remonstrators or people who wish to speak in opposition to the petition? All right. Staff, do you want to give a presentation?
Good evening, council. My name's Linda Albrand. I represent the Department of Metropolitan Development. And we review and handle all zoning cases in Marion County. This one comes to you because it's in the city of Beach Grove, and then it will go back to the Metropolitan Development Commissioner and ultimately the city-county council for final adoption after this hearing. It's a three-step process, which all rezonings are. Petitioners representative was correct in that the SU1 that is zoned now is religious uses. So if this property were ever separated or not run by the adjacent use, then it would not be legal under the SU1 because that's solely for religious use. We have no issues with them rezoning it to continue the use that they want to have. We, this particular intersection does not have any commercial uses. So we wanted to restrict them a little bit, which we're happy that the petitioners agree to those commitments. So basically, what it comes down to, what's permitted on this property is the nursing home, assisted living, and then any general office uses. So the, if they were to leave, the building would still be usable of some sort. And again, this will go on to the MDC, and it'll be on their no appeals docket unless somebody, a remonstrator, the petitioner, or staff appeals it, which is unlikely, and then it'll be rubber stamped from there on. Would you happen to answer any questions you have?
Thank you.
Any, any questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Linda. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak either in support of or in opposition of the petition?
You'll swear me in?
Sure.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about ready to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I support the request for variance. They, they have been good friends and good neighbors of the city for a long time. They, they've kept their property up, and there's no reason to believe lie that they would not do that in the future. So I support them, and I hope you vote 7-0.
Anybody else would like to speak, either in support of or in opposition to the petition? All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve petition 220-ZON-098.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All, well, we got to do a voice vote. So why don't we start down with Gary?
Yes.
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 Let the record reflect that the petition passes on a 7-0 vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford.
Thank you, council. On to the reading of the minutes. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, January the 4th, 2021. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just want to make a comment. In this minutes, we did a moment of silence for Dick Midkiss and Jerry Billington. Just wanted to note that Jerry Billington's grandson was a member of this eighth grade basketball team.
Oh, my God.
Thank you, Penny. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Next up, public comments. Counselor?
Yes. There's been several people who've signed up. I think most were parents and the coaches. But I think the only one is Mr. Skirvin. Mr. Skirvin, would you like to speak?
I apologize for my attire. I came straight to, from work.
Please state your name, please.
Dear esteemed council, my name is Rick Skirvin. I reside at 943 Charnwood Parkway here in Beach Grove. I'm here today in regards to the planning and possible construction of the new government center here in Beach Grove. It would be difficult to argue against the fact that the Beach Grove Fire Department needs upgraded living and working facilities. After seeing the facilities last year, I was disheartened to see how they were sleeping and how the female employees had to share some of the accommodations. Being in your situation on this matter is difficult, trying to balance the needs of the fiscal responsibility of the city and the needs of the fire department. I do have some questions, and I'm starting with you, as I believe there is, is a chain of command in your, the beginning of that chain of command. It's been well documented, sorry, my phone keeps switching off, been well documented that current administration would like to merge Beach Grove Fire Department and Indianapolis Fire Department, lessening the financial burden on our city while increasing the benefits of our firefighters. And here are my questions. If our community pays for this new building and the departments merge, what happens to the new building? Does it get signed over to IFD? And if it does, since the fire and police will share the building, will we be leasing space from Indianapolis for a police department? Or would IFD be leasing a space from our police department to retain fire department locally? If that's the case or in a scenario where the people of Beach Grove's tax revenues pay for the new building and it's handed over, as a resident, I can't agree with that. I'd like to thank and hope that the question's been asked, if the intentions are to merge the departments before any more time and money is spent for this endeavor. I'd also hope that we consider our infrastructure needs have been met before we continue towards this. Met, not towards. Our sewers needed attention decades ago, and while it's great that after all this time, we have finally a grant to start, they need completed. I believe from the meetings I personally have had with Citizens Utility, that the savings the city would enjoy from not treating storm water, the city would more than sustain an upgraded facility, and we could be proud and utilized comfortably by BGFD. If the plan is to merge departments, the cost should fall on Indianapolis. And if their plan is to omit fire stations altogether in Beach Grove, I'm certain that does not benefit our citizens. Let's do what's right for the citizens of Beach Grove. What is the plan moving forward? And then I'll stop my time and open for discussion.
There is, it's public comment, sir. So it's not a question answered.
I'm talking to the council.
Only thing we've discussed so far is a new police station. We haven't discussed a new fire department yet.
Is it not going to be a combined fire-police station?
No.
No? Okay. That's why I'm asking. I just, just asking. Okay.
And Rick, I'm not aware of any official plans to merge IFD and Beach Grove, but I certainly have heard some rumors.
Yeah. So I've read things in the paper and see, and heard as well. So, okay. If that's the answer, then thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak that has not signed up?
Thank you, council. Committee reports. Police station update. Chief?
Good evening. Hate to keep bringing it up, but that eighth grade team, I'm the Triton Central coach that they beat. The reason they weren't up, I do want to point out, though, the reason they weren't up here last year, seventh grade, is because we beat them. And so I just want to point that out.
Chief, are you looking for support or?
No, I didn't figure I'd get any. But that's fine. Update. We had another committee meeting last Thursday where I explained to the committee where we were. I've met with many of the developers. Well, I shouldn't say many. I'm sure there's more. But I've met with four groups. Very informative. And it's going to be interesting to see where we go with them. Tonight, of course, you will see a resolution to move forward with releasing an RFQ. And then we need, I've instructed the committee, not told them what to do, but I've just said that the next part for them to do is to start meeting with Jim and Jeff Peters to figure out the money side of this while the RFQs are coming back to us to stay on timeline. Trent is still working, Trent Newport, with Crossroads is still working on some of the ground. So we have a meeting Thursday afternoon to talk about a couple of the sites that we're potentially looking at. So I'll have an update for the committee after that meeting. We've done another station tour last week, and we have two planned for this week at Whitestown and Fisher's. And so we are moving forward with the preliminary, and it will be, the next big step is the councilman meeting with Peters and us receiving in the RFQs.
Got it.
Any questions?
I will let the council know that Chief Maurice does have a very professional thing he's doing so far. We do have a timeline that we are following to get stuff done. So we're not trying to hope to get stuff done. We have a timeline, so we know what needs to be done at this time. We have had good discussions, open discussions about possible locations where the building might go. And we've also, we've talked about restrictions, positive and negative, about several different locations. And I know one thing that was talked in extent was about retrofitting an existing building. And that's going to most likely end up costing more money to retrofit an existing building into a police station than it would to either tear down a building or to build one up on open land. So that's some stuff that we've already been discussing.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bobby, can I ask you a question? Though, within, so you're part of the committee, so I don't want to waste the chief's time.
Yes.
So have you guys come together yet with figures or anything like that? Because you just brought the thing about locations. Again, back to my question last month. If, if I had 10 acres and I donated it to the city, therefore there'd be no cost. I mean, what's the range? What's the window?
Well, that's one thing that the, with, seeing how this RFQ, we're basically are requesting for these developers to come back to us with their resume. And they're going to say, okay, well, we can build you this building, 20, let's just say, 24,000 square feet, 2,400 square feet, 20, like 24,000 square feet. And this is how much it's going to cost you to build that. So once we know how much it's going to cost to build the building and what the footprint's going to be, then we can narrow down possible locations. Because depending on what the footprint, you know, we're going to go with a one-story building or two-story building. There's a lot of different variables there. But first, we got to figure out how much is it going to cost? Because each developer is going to have a different cost, different, how much it's going to cost to develop it. But we're going to go and, after tonight's meeting, I'm going to have a meeting with Jim, and we're going to sit and schedule something so we can kind of have an idea of where we're looking at financially, what price range, and have a set number where we need to stay within. Basically, it's not going to be a blank check. One thing that we, was discussed was, another police station that was toured, they talked to the chief there, and he explained to them how he was able to cut several hundred thousand dollars from his budget by just changing a few things. You know, not having carpeting throughout the whole building, having a metal roof put on the building versus a traditional roof. And that was able to save their, their city, I think, $300,000, $400,000 total on the cost of their police station they built.
I kind of want to, he, he brought up something that I was going to mention, but you mentioned it, but I'm still going to mention it. And that is, the police department has been not only looking at options of, you know, all the things you can build, but also looking at how maybe you can do it at a better cost effective. A big part of our meeting the other day was talking about the particular police department, that some of the things they said were like no carpet and tin roof, and it sounded scary. But they also talked about how it worked well for that department and how it was ideas at least to look at how to save money. And, you know, the only police department I've seen recently in the last couple of years was marble floors and a fountain out front. And this department, I can tell you, hasn't brought either one of those up, which I'm, I'm proud of. But we, we also do want something nice. But he mentioned that, and I think it's important to talk about how much that they're dedicated to looking at, not only cost-saving methods too.
So was the committee, were you guys, it was all guys, right? Yeah. Were you guys included on that survey process? Did you have your fingerprints on that? Or was that just, did Jim put that out there? Because I'm, I'm just asking the questions based on-
I didn't. I, I first saw it as Jim put it out.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
For the questions, I mean, going back in December, when we, we started this process, we, we agreed to pursue the committee. And that's what I voted yes for. And then January came along, and Chief was here, and thank you for that, answered some questions. And here we are again. Now we're getting ready to do a resolution. And I just kind of like to know, because going back a couple of years ago, we as a city, as a corporation, there's some, some major things. The IDIM report you asked about months ago, what's, what's up with that? I mean, and I, and I just asked my, my ma, my mayor, you know, what's our plan? What's our, I think our last plan was 2008, I was told. You know, what's the plan? I mean, we just kind of, you know, pulled this up in front of everything else. So I want to make sure that we can take care of the, the IDIM report issues, you know, the sewer issues. We, we got a grant last year. That's fantastic. Thank you again for doing all that. But then the, the RDC just recently voted to do more sewer work, but they didn't even apply for a grant for that. And again, we had X amount of money we could apply to quadruple the amount of work. It's just I, I'd really like to see ink on paper showing what's first, what's second. And, and we spoke about that a long time back, having a plan. And if there's a plan, I'd really love to see it. Because, I mean, the finances, unless there's millions of dollars laying around, I mean, do you have any updates on that at all, Jim? I know, I know Chief just said he's going to talk to Mr. Peters.
No, what he's working on too. So we're going to meet in the next couple of weeks to have a presentation, or if he comes to work, you guys will get that. So we don't have any number on that.
So no consulting, okay. So, so we, we are starting to pay people for their professional opinions on how we do what we're doing. We're getting to that point.
We need to figure out what we can afford.
Right.
And this, this committee here is going to figure out what exactly they need. So they don't want to build something just because we can only afford $6 million. And see, what can we squeeze in for $6 million? That's all we get. So we build, like they said, a station that will last for 45 years.
Right.
But that comes back. So our queue for $8 million, and our finances come back. So if we can't do that, then that's when they have to start saying, okay, well, what's the most important to you?
You know, that's what makes it hard probably on the police departments then, because they've done the work, is they don't know where their, where their money lies. They, they have, you know, if they had a, this financial is going to help, I hope, give a better picture. Because, you know, you could go right now and look at New York City Police Department's latest building, because you don't have any guidelines. And I think financial guidelines is one of the biggest steps we're going to have to come up with. And I know that's what they're waiting on. I wanted to also say there is a timeline, which is helpful. But I, I do want to reiterate, popular or not popular, we do need to identify a location. Because that location itself is going to decide what kind of money needs to be spent to put a building on there. If it's good, open land, that's great. Or if there are other things that have to be done. So that location, for me, is kind of a mental thing.
Okay.
Knowing where that's at. And to, to kind of get an idea, hopefully that shouldn't cost a lot of money. But if we start going in areas where it's, you know, we could spend money on trying to determine where that is. So that's an important step to me. And I'll put Gavin on here.
No, no. I just want to reiterate, though, that the city hasn't spent a dime yet on any of this. And the only thing that might cost a little money is what you're asking for is a site. And that's what Trent is working on. We may have to figure out paying him for his time. However, the rest, the RFQ, putting this out, the most you'll have is publishing the RFQ, which would go out next week. But other than that, these developers, they come in, and it's like their marketing plan. So we don't pay a dime to them until the end. And so you won't have a payment until 2022, 2023. And all the, that cost is built into a model that we're looking at, which is the BOT, build, operate, transfer. So there's no money out. And so we can't get to a set figure until we get the RFQ out- is built into a model that we're looking at, which is the BOT, Build Operate Transfer. So there's no money out. And so we can't get to a set figure until we get the RFQ out and we start getting these back.
Okay.
And we, I've given you a big window of what it might cost. And if Peters comes back and says it's not there, then we all know it, and the developers walk away.
Okay.
And we walk away.
Okay. And again, I appreciate your honesty. I really, really do. But my only concerns, and I'm being transparent, is when a survey goes out and it talks about defunding you guys. That's the least off my radar. I want the best for you guys. But yet, I also know that there's people within my district, they just got the notification our sewer bill this month, and they're freaking out about the increase. So I have to walk them back to our February, March city council meeting and say, that was in there for the two-year thing that you amended. And, and they're, they're completely blind about it. So to them, six dollars a month is just devastating. And I don't have answers for them. I don't. You know, quite frankly, my heart breaks for them. But I, you know, and that's what we're doing. So we're looking at a, a facility, which I understand that. I mean, I get that. Some of the, you know, the questions, it's a 50-year-old building. Well, my home's an 80-year-old building, you know, and I, I deal with it, maintenance. But I just want to know, when it said defunding the police, that was just so, that was not a good thing to put on that survey, from, from where I come. I mean, that's why I asked.
I'm just talking about the update of the police department.
I'm talking about the whole picture.
I don't know. I mean, the survey is the survey. And, yeah, I mean, sewer rates are the sewer rates. And you bought your house knowing it was 80 years old, and there's just two of you living there. That police department was built 50 years ago with 15 officers and two support. And now we're 36 officers. And so we can't, we've outgrown our building. We didn't choose it. We've, we've outgrown it. And so therefore, it's time to move forward.
How many officers are in there at one time? You bring that up. That's a good, that's a good point.
It depends on what's going on. I, we've gone through this so many times about what could happen, and the scenarios where we've had multiple people and victims and suspects in the building. And community center are, when we used to do Citizens Police Academy, how many people were in there? And we don't do that anymore because the building can't hold it. So, I mean, at any point in time, we could have two, four, six, 14 to 15, plus your four personnel staff, two that are in the hallway.
And what's the square footage of the building? Because I, never have asked that question either.
It's 8,000.
Almost 9,000.
Eighty-five hundred, something like that.
Eighty-five, okay. Thank you.
Have you toured the building, Gary?
Yes, I have. Michael, give me a great tour, which I appreciate, or the chief, sorry. Give me a great tour.
Chief, hang on for a minute. I got a couple of questions. During all of this, and the committee can ask, answer this as well. Is there any discussion about building a government center?
No.
Any discussion about a fire station?
No.
No, because there is not.
No, the only thing that we've said that we would like to continue is having the court there, just because one, of the secure facility with them taking in money. It just makes more sense to have that there. So we look at that. And with us looking at adding a community center, it would only make sense that they could hold court there and keep their files there as well. So.
Chief, this is for my information. Do we still have agencies like ISP come in and use the facility?
Yes, IMPD does. ISP, Marion Calley.
Questioning, we've, uh,
FBI comes in, ATF, they run interviews out of it.
Mayor, I wanted to make a, a comment. Yeah, it's correct. Our means have been just about a police station. But I do want anybody to know, we do understand the needs of the fire department, too. There, there, I hate saying the word back, back burner, but we do understand that the conditions have changed with females and so forth, and fire has changed. But it hasn't been part of these discussions. We know that it has to be dealt with in the future. But one thing at a time is pretty difficult right now. So... I just don't, I think we didn't care about the fire department. I was really referring to firemen that might be watching.
Any other questions on the police station update?
So again, is there, is there a plan? I mean, as far as a...
Yeah, there's a plan to build a new police station.
No, I'm talking about for the city, everything we need within the city, just so I can...
There's a plan to do maintenance on sewers. There's a plan to do stormwater utility.
The dump to fix.
That is under the control of IDIM. IDIM will tell us what we have to do on that.
Okay. Is that...
And then we will defer to Westler, and then it will cost the city a significant amount of money.
And is there any updates on that? Because that happened back...
Nope. The only update from IDIM is to stay off of it.
My only concerns is that, just like the light bulbs, you know, when I asked you last month, did we budget for it? No. $300,000. You know, we're not budgeting for the...
We didn't budget for it because we didn't know when it was going to happen.
But we knew it was a projected need.
But it's a, it's a solid...
We signed a contract.
It's a solid investment, because we'd get a return of about $50,000 a year. We would be questionable if we didn't do it.
I'm just, I'm only concerned with the budgeting portion of it. Thank you.
I, I wish they would have told us that last year, but they didn't. They told us a couple of weeks...
Yeah, it was previous administration, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, before that, I think you signed it a period or four years ago. So yeah. I wish they would have told us, they'd be here to budget for this year, but they didn't.
But again, planning for it, that would have been, you know, foresight.
Yes, yeah, I think they would have...
That's what I'm asking for this, just to be...
If IDIM would have planned ahead and told us what they knew when it was coming, then it would have not done that ahead yet.
At least Citizens Energy planned ahead. They told us what they're going to charge us for the next four years to treat wastewater. So we have to plan for that. That's why you guys made the wise decision to raise rates. This is not the last time you're going to have to raise rates. Who's ever sitting here is going to have to raise rates each year, or you're going to fall behind. And if you fall too far behind, you're not going to become solvent. I don't like it either, but it's spelled out, clearly spelled out what Citizens Energy is going to do. They're going to raise their rates every single year. Wait till you get to 2025, folks, when you have to enter into a new agreement. They're going to put their foot right on your throat.
I know you talked about that, I think it was, what, February, when you had that town hall meeting in this, this hall. But, you know, I think we should be aggressive in legally, not allow that to go forward.
I did not hear from the ABC representative today. Next up, RDC. Liz?
Yep. You want me to? Okay. We had our first meeting. We have new officers. Nathan Rinks is president. Matthew Kocivar is our vice president. Kathy Chappell will be our secretary. Our next meeting will be February the 18th, in these chambers at 7:00 PM. We agreed to help the city with some projects, repaving Main Street from 13th to 17th, correct drainage problem at Garstang and Shaft Road Street, and then help with the LED, the IPL, converting all the streetlights to LED. So we are going to be working on our legal, we'll be working on resolutions for those projects. And we certainly do have the money to help and assist and meet all of our financial goals.
Thank you, Liz. Compliance, you, you should have the compliance report in your packet. And then the last one is financial. Jim?
Good evening. City hall remains closed to the public. Permits are still being received and processed. Citizens can pay their sewer bills online, by phone, mail, or by dropping their payment off in one of the two 24-hour drop boxes. I've been working on reports that are due on the gateway. The 100R has been submitted. This is a report on wages paid to every city employee for the previous year. The 2020 annual report is due on March 1st. I'm working on closing out the month of December this week, which will allow me to begin entering information from 2020 into the gateway. Pension relief has been submitted to Empress for 2021. They will review the reports submitted with relief payments scheduled for later this year. The first RDC bond payment for the year has been paid, with only two payments remaining on their bond. The first of two payments for the year on the 2012 bond has been paid for $116,047.50. There are four payments remaining on this bond, with the final payment occurring in January of 2023. The first of two payments for the year on the sewage bond, 2015A, has been paid for $36,952.90. This bond runs until January 2025. The bank account balances are listed below as of today, February 1st, 2021. These totals are prior to the claims that were approved earlier this evening. City Corporation, $3,071,885.99. Utilities, $1,254,172.66. Terminal Investigation Fund, CIF, $34,318.54. RDC General, $352,701.09. And the RDC Debt Service, $240,000. If you have any questions at all, please let me know. Respectfully submitted, James Kaufman.
Jim, you're available to meet by appointment, though, if somebody needs to talk with you.
Of course, anytime. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
That concludes committee reports. We'll move to unfinished business. And then council, last month, you filled out conflict of interest, nepotism, and contract forms. Tonight, Jim will go through the, the names pertaining to each one, then we'll ask that you approve them by voice vote. So Jim?
All right, we're start, start with the uniform conflict of interest disclosure statements. These were submitted. James W. Kaufman, David Harrison, Elizabeth Lamping, Sandy Seward, and Lynn, Lynn Reckwig. Same as last year, the same ones that were submitted last year, just updated and signed again for this year. So those will be submitted on the gateway once they're approved. We just need a motion to approve those.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign, please.
All right, next are the City of Beach Grove Nepotism Certifications. We're going to go through the list here. We have Dennis B. Buckley, James W. Kaufman, Kevin R. Day, Kara Ferguson, Robert Ferguson, Gary Hall, David Harrison, Elizabeth Lamping, Sandy Seward, William Buddy Templin. And that is it for the City of Beach Grove Nepotism Certifications.
Need a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the nepotism certifications.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign, please. Thank you.
All right. And the next bunch is the City of Beach Grove Contract Certification Forms. Dennis B. Buckley, James W. Kaufman, Kevin R. Day, Kara Ferguson, Robert Ferguson, Gary Hall, David Harrison, Elizabeth Lamping, Sandy Seward, and Buddy Templin.
Motion to approve the forms. I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign, please. Thank you. That concludes unfinished business. Under new business, we have three items tonight, council. First item is Resolution Number 2, 2021. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record, please.
Resolution Number 2, 2021. Common Council of Beach Grove, Indiana authorizes the release of a request for qualifications and proposals under Indiana Code 5-23, and taking certain other actions related thereto. Whereas the Common Council of Beach Grove, Indiana, has considered the provisions on Indiana Code 5-23, and whereas the city is a political subdivision in a county containing a consolidated city pursuant to Indiana Code 5-23-1-1, and whereas it is the intent of the council to issue a request for proposals and qualifications, the RFPQ under Indiana Code 5-23, to explore the development, construction, financing, operation, and/or transfer of a new police department headquarters building. Now therefore, be affirmed by the Common Council of Beach Grove, Indiana as follows. Section 1, Formation of RFPQ Committee. For this RFPQ released under Indiana Code 5-23, the council hereby names the following individuals to serve on the RFPQ committee. Council President Pro Tem, Robert Ferguson, Counselor Dave Harrison, Counselor Kevin Day, Counselor Buddy Templin, Police Chief Michael Maurice, Deputy Chief Mike, sorry, Deputy Chief Robert Mercury, Deputy Chief Tom Hurley, and any other police officer within the Beach Grove Police Department, as identified by the police chief. Section 2, Authorization. The council hereby authorizes the committee to issue an RFPQ under Indiana Code 5-23, to study the development, construction, financing, operation, and transfer of the project, and to make a recommendation to the council, as it deems necessary and wise, at a future public meeting to enter into an agreement with an offer under the terms of Indiana Code 5-23. Section 3, Other Actions. Any officer of the council are hereby authorized to take any and all actions and execute any documents or certificates that such officers deem necessary or desirable to affect the foregoing resolutions. Any such actions taken or documents or certificate executed and delivered are hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved. Section 4, Severability. If any section, paragraph, or provision of the resolution shall be held to be invalid or unenforceable for any reason, the invalidity or enforceability of such section, paragraph, or provision shall not affect any other remaining provisions of the resolution. Section 5, Effectiveness. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage.
Thank you. Counsel, the floor is open for any questions or comments.
Mayor, I got a question. Section 1, did the committee request that, when it states the last two sentences, any and other police officers within the City of Beach Grove Department, as identified by the chief? Is that something the committee wanted? Or is just all officers can be, is that...
No, actually, it's, the other two officers I'm serving on are Captain Matt Hickey, who's a detective, which we help with the Detective Division and their space, and then Sergeant David Parker, who would help represent the Patrol Division.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments concerning this resolution? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Kara?
Thank you, counsel. Seven after eight. Counsel, General Ordinance Number 1, 2021, is up for approval on first reading only. And what this is, counsel, this is an ordinance that oversees amusement license permits. And I included the old ordinance in here. It dates back to 1964. And almost all of it is updated. So the new ordinance still gives the police chief control of amusement machines. But it waters it down to whereas if you have less than five machines, you do not have to have a permit. If you are a nonprofit, you do not have to have a permit. Any public building who has more than five amusement machines, like, for instance, pinball machines, arcade machines like that, has to pay a fee of $75 per year. That hasn't changed. It's been like that forever. But it gives the police chief more control, or his designee, over how these places are maintained, and the issuance of a master vendor's license. The old ordinance used to talk about bowling alleys, talk about pool tables... The old ordinance used to talk about bowling alleys, talk about pool tables, shuffleboard tables, dance halls. None of that applies anymore. I mean, the eight years that I've been mayor, I don't think I've ever seen a permit issued for a bowling or a pool table, public dances, things such as that. It just doesn't happen. And there's not enough of them to go around. But there are some vending machines out there that we really need to watch, and that's why this ordinance has been streamlined. I would recommend that you approve it on first reading and go from there. The same dates apply, April 1st of each year. It's been like that forever till the end of March the following year. I'll open the floor up for any questions or comments. You can even, council, you can even decide that we don't even want this ordinance. You could just delete it in its entirety and be done with it. But it does clean it up, and it does give the police chief or his designee some control on the permit and issuing or issuing the permit and revoking the permit if there's bad activity happening.
So, it serves a purpose for, it serves a purpose, you know, to, for, just for regulation or just for watchfulness, I guess, for lack of a better. Okay.
Is there any, like, scenarios? And I don't mean to sound sarcastic, but like, are there, like, a bunch of people, like, hanging out around pool tables and pinball machines getting injured, or like, what's happening?
No, nothing.
Okay. There's fun, and I don't know about it. I want to know where it's at.
That's what I thought, too.
Only question I got is, where is there still a pinball machine at?
Yeah, I don't know.
There is these arcade games, Great Times, Expo, Beach Grove Bowl, Couple Taverns. But, you know, like, there's not, there's, you can count the number of pool tables other than Great Time or Expo on one hand.
Yeah.
Counsel, I didn't see the pong game on here, so you're okay.
Are we allowed to ask the chief a question about that? Is that, is that okay? Hey, chief, is this a waste of your time? I mean, being out patrolling these facilities, or is it something you could say?
No, I, we usually hand this off to our road officers, and the road officer goes to go in, check it out, inspect it a little bit, if you know the owner, make sure that everything's looking.
One-on-one? Okay, so it's a good thing? Okay. It's not, okay, thank you.
We would charge Expo Bowl, they have 80 lanes. We would charge them a fee of $75 plus $10 a year, if I'm not mistaken, per lane.
Oh, why?
And a dollar per year, per machine, on top of that. Well, we're doing that to a business that has invested millions of dollars in the city. So, why can't we just, you know, we're going to issue a, we're going to waive the fee for bowling alleys. You have these vending machines, this is what it's going to cost you a year. And if you're a nonprofit, you still have to get a permit, but you do not pay a fee.
So, basically, condenses all the breakdowns of the different fees as well? Okay, that's important.
Yeah. And we're probably talking, this ordinance would affect maybe 10 businesses at the most. I mean.
How much revenue does those 10 businesses generate with the fees? Just?
Less than $1,000. Matter of fact, good question, Gary. Matter of fact, we, last year, we waived the fees because of COVID. We felt it was unfair to charge these businesses when they were closed.
That's a good call.
Do you guys see, like, and I just have to point this out, how outdated this old one is? Section C, nobody that's not reached the age of 16 can be present in an amusement location during daytime hours when public schools are in session.
Good point, Kara.
I mean, there are kids running around playing pinball machines.
You're cleaning it up, either clean it up and amend it or get rid of it.
I just think this is funny. Somebody's going to be upset about this.
So, what I would do, and it's up to you, but I would ask that you approve it on first reading, and I'll ask for a vote to read it by title only.
I'll make a motion to read General Ordinance Number 1 by title only.
I'll second. We'll start to my left, Dave.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only. It'll come next month. All right, it'll come eventually, but at least not tonight. General Ordinance Number 1, 2021. General Ordinance Number 1, 2021, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 112 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove concerning amusement machines and master vendor's license.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this one? Not, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 1, 2021, on first reading only.
I'll make a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 1 on first reading.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on second reading and third reading at the next council meeting. Thank you, council. Final order of business tonight is General Ordinance Number 2, 2021, up for approval on first reading. And this one's much more serious. What the legislature has done, council, is they have given the cell phone industry, their lobbyists, part blank authority to put a small cell tower anywhere they want. It's a bad bill, but they did it. So, these, hey, these companies like Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, they are now working to put these towers anywhere, and you probably seen it on the news, to where, to upgrade their 5G technology. Well, when they do this, they just plan in neighborhoods wherever they want, and the neighbors or the people that live there are irate. And I want to get the message out to all of you and to the county, or to the public, is you folks have no control over this, but yet you are going to get the brunt of upset people if one of these towers just pop up. So, what I want to do, the least thing that we can do is require these companies to get a permit for these things individually, and we have some type of control over what's going on, what's going on. That's what this ordinance is about. We cannot prevent a small cell tower from being installed. But we can require them to get a permit on each individual tower and pay a fee for inspection. And every time they modify that tower, to have them get another permit. So, that's what this is about. Craig has a little, you want some insight on it?
I mean, that's exactly right. I mean, terrible legislation, cities are stuck with it, and this is our only, only really pushback or recourse we can do is make them to get a permit. So, we have some sort of regulation.
So, other cities around us, this is the fee they charge. They charge $250 for a permit, and then $100 if they modify the cell tower. But I want you to, I recommend you pass that along with an inspection fee of $75 for the installation of the tower. So, that's what this ordinance is about. If, we'll know, you guys will know when the first cell tower goes up, because somebody will call in and complain, because they stick them wherever they want to stick them.
This kind of, sounds like they're paying property owners, in some cases, $10,000 to $20,000 to be able to put a.
I don't know. I haven't heard that.
I mean, even the City of Beach Grove receives or our.
Oh, that's Comcast.
Right, but still, under the same thing, cell towers are not included in that same. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Comments on that? Questions on that?
Do we know how many cell towers we currently have in the city? Does that, none? Okay. None in the industrial park area that would be cell towers? Okay.
Will it increase the quality of our bandwidth?
Yes.
It will. So, it's kind of like good and bad.
Gary, depending on the customer, depending on who's doing it, Verizon? Yeah. Sprint? You know, I don't know. Yes.
Okay, so there's good and bad. So, on the opposite side of that line, what if we increase these fees to kind of deter it?
You guys can do it. I mean, you have the authority to do it.
I personally don't want to poll in my yard. Well, it probably has to be an easement to begin with legally, I think.
I would hope so.
Well.
Back, back.
We're on an existing pole.
Yeah. Back in May, May 1st of 2017, our board approved a resolution that prohibits that in subdivisions that have all of the utilities that are underground. So, that was the last day that we could do that resolution, and we did it. But that was back in four years, almost four years ago. It's, it's a bad bill. It's, it's a bad practice, and people in the residential neighborhoods are getting the short end of the stick.
What about, what about changing the permit fee to $500 instead of?
It's up to you guys.
$50.
Mayor, who would do the inspection? I would think it's going to be more than $75. We're going to pay somebody to come there and do the inspection.
Well, the inspection would be for the installation of the pole. We don't have anybody who knows the wetter law to inspect the wireless stuff like that. That's over our heads, literally. But to inspect the.
Like what you do.
Do we have any idea what modifications they would? Would that be something, sounds like something?
Upgrades to the.
Sounds like something, I'm kind of on the amount of how often they would do it. Sounds like something they would do quite often to me.
Yeah, I don't know.
Is there somebody from a carrier that could, like, come and give us more education about this? Only because I would hate for us to be like, no, raise it, and then nobody does it, and then all of a sudden, none of us have signal. You know what I mean? Like, as they're upgrading.
Big black hole.
Yeah, and then all of a sudden, Beach Grove is the black hole.
Mayor, you can tell I don't know nothing about cell towers, but I'd be willing to, on first reading, to move it forward and then make changes down the road.
And then the other question I have is, can we restrict where they go, like, we don't want one set up in the middle of Sarah Bolton Park.
I don't think so.
It has to be an easement.
What do they look like?
Yeah, how big are they?
Are they just, is this a metal?
I've seen them, I think on the news, I've seen them 20, 30 feet in the air.
Yeah, they're usually taller than a tree.
Yeah, they have to clear line of sight and with.
It's made of some special, I mean, metal or something, I guess.
You know, futuristically, a lot of that stuff in newer communities, that's all, our bandwidth's underground. I mean, why don't we?
Can't do that for 5 feet.
What's that?
Can't do that for 5 feet. It uses a band, it has to be so above because it has to connect to each tower.
Even fiber optic?
It's a shorter bandwidth, which moves speeds. I have a friend who works for Verizon.
Yeah.
That's why, and I've also seen the other news article. It has to be that high and above the tree line so it can connect to each tower because that's, it's moving so much data, and the signal has to be stored together.
Patchwork.
You can adjust the radar.
Have you seen a tower, Matthew? You know what they're like?
I've only seen what it looks on the news, and I don't know what they would build here as opposed to on the north side.
Yeah.
So, I have no idea of what it could be up here. That's something you would have to ask Verizon and AT&amp;T about.
Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
I'm familiar with what you're talking about. I know they're huge, because they have to be above, and there's going to be so many of them. But, yeah.
But another part of this, I don't want, I don't want somebody to be irate and approach you.
Yeah.
You saying, what are you talking about? You know?
Crazy proactive.
Yeah. So, I'll.
But I'm like Kara, it will, I mean, if we don't, if we get tough, if we get tough on them, it's not going to interfere or decrease our reception somehow.
Right, and people will be upset because they're like, why don't you allow them in certain areas? I mean, well, here's the thing, could these companies approach citizens and say, hey, we want to do this, pay him a pretty penny to do it, and it's tempting, and then it won't matter what the fee is, they'll want to do it. You know what I mean? It's kind of a double edged sword.
No.
Didn't the bill say it specifically it had to be an easement?
I think it's easement or right of way, easement right of way.
You just can't say, put it in my yard and pay me 20 grand.
Well, I'm like Mr. Timplin, we could start here and then modify it.
I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please. Jim, on first reading.
General Ordinance Number 2, 2021. General Ordinance Number 2, 2021, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove concerning fees assessed by the city for construction services and permits. Whereas there is a big push by cell companies to expand broadband capabilities throughout central Indiana, and whereas this Indiana state legislator has granted approval for all, for cell companies to install freestanding small cell phone towers throughout Indiana, and whereas local units of government have their hands tied as to where these small cell towers can be installed. And whereas residents of local communities have become very concerned about this, and the authority granted to cell companies to encroach right of ways and easements. Now therefore be it affirmed that the Common Council desires to amend Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove concerning permit fees. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the Common Council desires the following section be inserted into Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Add the following. Chapter 150.083, Small Cell Towers. Section A, Permits. 1, A permit is required by the City of Beach Grove for each individual cell tower installation. Fees are as follows. A, small cell towers, $250. B, modification to an existing tower, $100. Inspection fee of $75 shall be charged for the inspection of the installation for each individual small cell tower. Now therefore be it affirmed that the Common Council desires that this fee structure be added to Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove and no other ordinance. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance goes into effect immediately after approved by the Common Council, signed by the Council President Pro Tem, attested by the Clerk Treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Any other questions or comments concerning this ordinance? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve on first reading only.
I'll make a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 2 on first reading.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on second, third reading at the next council meeting. That concludes new business. Council comments beginning on my left, Dave. I really have none. I just want to thank everybody for coming. Congratulations to the eighth grade basketball team, and hope everyone stays safe and healthy.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. Just a reminder, this February is Black History Month, American Heart Month. Kind of the words of Dr. Fauci, get your vaccination when they're available. Viruses cannot mutate if they, if they don't, viruses cannot mutate if they don't replicate. Get your vaccination and stay safe. Thank you.
Carrie?
Thank you. Earlier this month, the Board of Public Works and Safety approved to continue paying one of our professional Beach Grove police officers while he was deployed to Washington, DC. I just personally wanted to thank the board, as a veteran, for that gesture. It was very kind and generous of the city to do that. Also, again, congratulations to eighth grade guys, they're all gone, for winning their conference championship. That's it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, for, I just wanted to say thanks for everybody that reached out during Bobby's surgery, and even the fire department, who were so willing to come and help me put him on a gurney and hoist him into the house afterwards. But unfortunately, he had enough wherewithal that I didn't have to do that. But they were very willing to come and assist because nobody in the neighborhood would have wanted to see me trying to carry him in the house. So, thank you, guys, all for your support there in doing that, and congrats to those awesome group of boys.
I'll be your buffer before you can respond to that. I do want to thank the judge for coming forward and how successful our courts have been, and how it reaches out there to communities as well. Congratulations, of course, to the eighth grade basketball team, and as well to Rick Skirving coming forward, because things like that are a good opportunity for us to bring out further information that the community might not be aware of.
Okay. Well, first, I want to thank all the citizens and other elected officials and police and fire that reached out and to check on me during my recovery from my surgery. I truly do appreciate it. It does remind me why we moved to Beach Grove and why we serve Beach Grove as the small town feel and how much people do truly care about each other. I just want to remind everybody that it's come that time again. We're doing the free paper shred and appliance drop-off. It's going to be Saturday, February 20th, Behind City Hall, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Just remember, they do not take tubes from TVs or not accept it. So, please take advantage of that service that is provided for free for the residents. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Counsel, a couple notes. I put it in your packet. Your W2 is in your packet, so please make sure you don't discard it with your envelope. And also, I would like to hold another council workshop on Thursday, February the 21st, our fifth, at 6:30 in the council chambers. The purpose of this workshop is to make a presentation on our fire suppression responses with the City of Indianapolis and the future of our mutual aid agreement. There will not be any vote taken. The public is invited to attend but will not be allowed to speak. They'll, they'll have other opportunities for that. Beach Grove Fire Department and IFD members will be asked to speak along with local 416 representatives. Council members can offer comments and ask questions. This is to pass on information for all of you. This is just an information meeting for all of you to see the future of our fire department, fire suppression division, not the ambulance division, and the City of Indianapolis. So February the 25th at 6:30 PM in these chambers. And I appreciate your patience tonight. Counsel asks for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.